I'm calling to order the October 1st, 2018 school committee meeting of East Long Meadow. It is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped. Is there any of us that might be auding or videotaping this? Seeing none and hearing none, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rule call starts to my left.
Jake Brady, student rap.
Bill Fontseca.
Sarah Trulia.
Gregory Thompson.
Rich Fruchero.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Elizabeth Marcin, Boucher.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Salwery, Recording Secretary.
Thank you. I move to argument number two, approval of minutes. Two point one, approval of the September 17th, 2018 regular session meeting minutes. We have a motion.
Move to approve the September 17th, 2018 regular session minute.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We are unanimous. Committee and subcommittee communications. I think we'll start with you, Mrs. Marcin, Boucher.
Um, I don't think I have anything other than the event. Spartan run was good. They had a good time with it, so that went well, and that's it right now.
Mr. Thompson.
High school open house, my first one. Uh, it was good. I thought two hours is gonna be a lengthy amount of time, but it went really quick, and um, good to see a lot of new teachers that I don't know and
Didn't have.
That my daughter, that I didn't have.
That's showing your age now, you know.
Yeah. And uh, my daughter's thoroughly enjoying the high school, so um, it was good to be part of open house, yep.
Sarah Trulia.
I was able to go to um, both evenings of the Meadowbrook open house. Um, it was really well attended, little sessions, um, students are excited, teachers have their rooms really well provisioned and organized, and welcome families. Um, it was just a really great experience on both nights.
Does it look good? It does look good. It's the fun thing to transform.
Yes, they do, and they were so, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
They were so gracious in the back. I talked to them for a little while about the work, and they were diligent about making progress.
They're working second shift, so they were just being quiet during.
They were still working.
Still working, though.
Okay.
I'll be hosting a Division Five meeting on Saturday, October 27th, at 8:30 in the morning
at the Collaborative for Educational Services in North Hampton. Topics will be a resolutions clinic for all members who are in attending, going over the nine resolutions prior to the delegate assembly, and discussion of the future of public education in the Connecticut Valley. So, information is on the MASC website if anybody's interested in attending.
Thanks.
Mr. Brady.
Um, I also attended the open house of high school. I was helping to guide parents around, looking for where they needed to go. This year, something new. Teachers um, were supplied, supplied their syllabi using QR codes on their classroom doors, so parents had the opportunity to take a picture of it, and through that picture they had access to the, to the class's syllabus. So that was something that was unique, and I think that's um, showing that East Long Meadow is having some great technological advancements. Um, and then, the East Long Meadow High School pep rally. Student council is beginning to plan this event, and for the first time in a few years, we have been approved to hold it in a large gymnasium.
Oh, change.
Yes, so, um, in the past few years, um, it's been held in the auditorium, but in the name of a more crowdsourced and enthusiastic atmosphere, we believe the pep rally will have success being held in a large gym. And then, this past Friday, and our Spartan block advisories, um, students had the opportunity to sign up for various activities that will occur during the October 19th Spartan block. Some of these activities include Spartan acoustic jam session with Mr. Freeman, um, working through the college application process with Mr. Martin, and ultimate frisbee. And the National Honor Society will also offer tutoring to students during this time.
Excellent. One question on the pep rally, it really involved in the whole school, the large gym. We're gonna change the master ceremony, aren't we?
The what?
I'm making a joke. Isn't Mr. Martin master ceremony?
Yes, yes, he still is. Only if he's voted in by the student council.
That's right. That's right.
And I just have two quick guys. First, um, I say that I've kept up my record of not seeing many winning games. I went to the football game. Field hockey and boys' soccer, and all three teams lost. In fact, one parent commented that maybe I should stay away a little bit more. Uh, and then I was just really touched by the MCAR scores. Just looking at them individually, I can't believe how well we did. I should say, I can't believe how well we did. It's a real comment to the whole school system, uh, how well we did, and if you look at it in comparison to the other school system, we really plop at how well we achieved. So, from the superintendent right through every teacher and every paraprofessional, fantastic, fantastic. On that. Moving along, any opportunity for business to address the committee? Okay, and I will take at this time a change to our agenda.
I move that we modify the agenda to move seven point three, seven point four, and seven point five up to where we are now.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Say thank you, any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? We unanimous again, Ms. Seletti. Okay, and I guess our guest speaker today is Mr. Kevin McGee. So, Kevin, we're gonna start first with seven point three, uh, which is the LAX Plus to use the high school field on Sunday, November 4th, from 8:00 to 4:00. Mr. Smith, are you gonna, I'm here also.
Sure. Um, I'm sure Mr. McGee can give many of the specific details, but I believe we've done this the last two years.
Correct.
Um, it's a college recruiting tournament, uh, that LAX Plus puts on. We have a number of our players playing in it, um, and they like to use our fields, and specifically our turf field, as their premier venue.
Yep, so there'll be approximately forty teams. There's over a hundred college scouts. The event is even much larger than East Long Meadow. There's, uh, it's going on simultaneously at Minnetoga High School, and we do anticipate bringing in quite a large amount of rental revenue from it. Uh, the past two years, they're an excellent, uh, group that comes in, they clean up after themselves. Uh, it's a really, really well-run event. Uh, and the key thing for the school committee is, it is on a Sunday, so they would be looking to start at 8:00 AM, and they finish around 4:00 PM. I've talked to them about the PA system that's in the back of the school, about not starting that until after, um, the church service is over. There's no PA system on the turf, uh, so it's only in the back of the school, but I can talk to them about the time as far as when to start.
Thank you, Mr. McGee, that's good thinking, yeah. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the request for LAX Plus to use the high school field on Sunday, November 4th, 2018, from 8:00 to 4:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? We are unanimous again, seven point four. MIA eighth grade athletic waiver. Ms. McGee again.
So, for the MIA waivers, just to recap, every year the MIAA requires us to reapply every year, and there's four steps to that process. The first step is talking to the administration of the high school, uh, the middle school, making sure that those principals are supportive of it. Uh, I did talk to both principals, they're both supportive of it, but we do still have concerns about the social dynamic, bringing eighth graders up with high school aged kids. The second step would be bringing it to the school committee, then the third step, the ADs vote on it, uh, that are in our league, and then the final step is the MIA would approve it. So that's the four-step process. As far as the teams that are looking for waivers, if you remember, last year, we asked for a swimming waiver. We no longer need that swimming waiver, so that's why I'm not applying for that. We have numbers to support boys and girls swimming, uh, but you'll notice on your memo, the ski team. So the first one on there is girls skiing. The MIA recommends applying for a waiver if we don't reach eight participants in girls skiing. We're anticipating two returning skiers. Um, we're not completely sure how many incoming ninth graders are gonna be skiing, and then we're not sure about the exact number of eighth graders. Uh, that's still in the signup process, but we definitely know that we're below that number of eight that the MIA recommends in order to, um, apply for a waiver. As far as boys skiing goes, we're anticipating six returning skiers, and if for some reason these numbers go up between now and the start of the season, the MIA does expect us to drop the waiver if current high school students exceed the number that they have listed. So let's just say we get really surprised, ten boys skiers sign up, we would not, uh, then continue with eighth grade, uh, skiers. The MIA expects us to drop that, um, waiver if we have enough high school students. So that's, uh, girls and boys skiing, uh, and I skipped wrestling, sorry about that. Uh, wrestling has approximately nine returning wrestlers, and the MIA recommends having eighteen before applying for a waiver. Uh, so that's kind of the numbers with the three different sports teams.
So what we have in four eighth grade waivers, we have hockey, wrestling, girls skiing, boys skiing.
Correct. Hockey was voted on last year, and it was important to, um, get that set, knowing that our numbers were low because of a lot of our, um, we anticipated, a lot of our eighth grade, current eighth grade hockey players had to make commitments to either possibly playing for a private team, and all that money was due back in last spring, so, uh, we anticipated that being a potential issue, so that's why we voted on it and brought it to the school committee last year, or last spring, I should say.
Mr. McGee, am I correct that, um, with the wrestling waiver last year, we kept our eighth graders predominantly at the JV level?
So, wrestling, uh, our coaches did a really good job trying to recruit, and they were at, uh, the middle school, they were at football games. Unfortunately, there was no eighth graders that came up for wrestling last year.
Okay.
But it was good to have that open to the wrestlers. As far as swimming last year, we did have two female swimmers that were in eighth grade that swam with the high school. It went really well. Uh, they were a big part of the team. Socially, they, they did well with the team, uh, but again, we won't be looking for a swimming waiver this year because the numbers are back up.
What are, what's the threshold for hockey, the numbers?
Hockey numbers were twenty-three, I believe, was the number that the MIA recommended to apply. Uh, I don't have my notes from last spring, um, but I believe the number was twenty-three. And again, it would, it would be similar to the other sports where if the high school, nine through twelve, um, for some reason surprises us, then the MIA does expect us to drop that.
Switching over to skiing, I see, you know, I'm primarily concerned about, obviously, girls with only two returning ski members, ski team members. Do you have any, any feeling, any feelers out there as to what may happen with the freshman class this year?
I talked to the coach, uh, and he was thinking one or two incoming freshmen. Uh, it's, again, as a sport, there, we'll try to talk to the returning skiers, see if they can find out who has interest, try to recruit some skiers to sign up, but those numbers are definitely very low.
When do the waivers have to be submitted?
Um, so they're, ideally, you wanna set it up about a month before the season starts at, at the latest. You can apply for an emergency waiver once the season's started, but that's rare, and you don't wanna be put in that position where you're scrambling. You do have to complete all four steps that I talked about earlier before they can participate.
Any questions, Mr. McGee?
So, in terms of sports that are not, that have large participation, at what point do we start to consider not funding the sport, specifically, I'm thinking skiing with two participants, and the stipend alone for the coaching and the busing, we'd have to provide busing for two students. I don't really wanna see any programs disappear, but at some point, if there's not enough interest in them, do we have to start thinking about not, not funding them? A question for another year, perhaps.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'm bringing these eighth grade waivers, I would hate to get to that point, I really don't wanna get to that point. Um, the transportation cost would not change because it's always one bus going for skiing, and one thing that is interesting with skiing is, since it is an individual sport, um, it's, it is cheaper the less people that ski, so every time that we put a skier on the mountain, we're paying for the tickets for every single race, um, so it, the cost goes up as more skiers sign up. It's, it's one of those sports that costs a lot of money when you have a lot of purchases.
I think we should probably vote on these individually.
Yeah, no, individually.
So let's start with, I have a motion to approve the eighth grade waiver for wrestling.
I move to approve the eighth grade waiver for the wrestling team.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We unanimous. Next sport, motion for girls skiing, eighth grade waiver.
I move to approve the girls skiing, eighth grade waiver.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any more discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We are unanimous. And finally, boys skiing.
Move to approve the boys skiing waiver to include eighth graders.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion?
My just comment would be, and I'm sure you're working on this, is, especially maybe with the hockey, if there's more students that, you know, when the eighth graders are being updated on what's happening, all that kind of stuff, do you guys have a way so that they're not maybe necessarily in the large group?
Yes, that's a great point. We are actually meeting with, um, ice hockey parents and potential eighth grade players, um, one week from tomorrow, uh, so we do have that meeting set up for just eighth grade students who are interested in ice hockey and their parents, and it's a great suggestion for, uh, the other sports also, once we figure out where the interest is.
I think the captain can contact them separate or something.
Yes, that's a great point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcin, Boucher. Uh, all those in favor for boys skiing, eighth grade waiver, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We unanimous again. And I'll stop at to the presentation here from Mr. McGee, take us to seven point five, please.
So this is for the MIA tournament games. In the past, we posted field hockey tournament games, lacrosse tournament games, and soccer tournament games. The MIA pays for all of those expenses. They pay for the lights, they pay for VPW cleanup for the custodians. They do ask that the school committee waives the rental fee. Uh, one of the reasons why they ask that is we're an MIA member school. We do pay dues to be part of the MIA, but in order for the MIA to keep costs and dues as low as possible, they try to get as many schools as possible to host their tournament games at their high schools. Um, and we've had really good success and great, um, the, the teams that we've hosted have really appreciated us hosting them before. Um, a hundred percent of the concessions that we sell at those games can go to one of our clubs or sports teams' booster clubs. Whatever team we're hosting, I ask that booster club first, and if they're not able to, um, run the concession stand, then I'll ask another team's booster club to do that. Um, like I said, we hosted last year, and it went really well. Um, the MIA definitely appreciates us hosting, and for example, with field hockey in the fall, a potential matchup could be a field hockey final, uh, potentially of maybe Minnetoga versus Long Meadow where those two schools, um, this would be a perfect site to host those two schools, and then in the future, when Minnetoga has their turf field in a few years, um, I'm sure that they'll bring it to their school committee to possibly host events where, it would be great for us to be able to travel to Minnetoga or to Long Meadow for tournament games. So it's definitely schools helping out each other so that teams can have a really good atmosphere for their, uh, tournament game.
Can we waive the fees? Yeah, well, we have, we've done this in the past, we're waiving the fees. So I'll move that we approve the request by MIA to host the playoff games for field hockey on November 5th through the 9th, 2018, waiving the rental fee.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Thank you.
One for three for three.
All right, no problem.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. Okay, moving to presentations. I'm gonna turn to Mr. Smith about an update on the MSBA core program statement of interest.
Okay, thank you. Um, so in your packet, we have, uh, two letters, one from State Senator Eric Lesser, and one from State Representative Angelo Pupolo. Both are addressed to our State Treasurer, Deborah Goldberg, who also is the Chairperson of the Board of Directors of the Mass School Building Authority. And, uh, if you've had a chance to read through both letters, I think they're very well-written and capture the key points in our statement of interest that we've submitted, um, the last few years. Uh, and this is timely because in the core program, which, uh, is looking at a much larger project than, um, the accelerated, accelerated repair program, which we're currently, in which we're currently, um, involved at Meadowbrook, the core program looks at either an entirely new building project or a, um, expansive renovation project. And their timeline for decision-making, uh, after you submit in April of, um, the previous school year, is in the November, December timeframe of the fall. So these letters hitting, uh, Deborah Goldberg in September should help us be part of that discussion, which we actually have been very much part of the last three years, just not enough to get us over the top into the invitation into the eligibility period. So I was happy, uh, that I was able to catch up with Senator Lesser and Representative Pupolo at our fire station on September 11th during the candlelight vigil. They always come out and support East Long Meadow, um, and become part of that vigil, and they offered to do this as we were talking after the vigil.
I think that's great. I, I like that they've used, they took the time to look up the information, to learn a little bit about our problems, and, uh, maybe in another month or less than a month would be nice if, uh, um, maybe another representative takes the time to write us, Eric Lesser, whatever, and
Yeah, special Mr. Pro, we only has one precinct out of four in this town.
Yeah, no, it was nice you did that.
Well done. They are very, very effective letters, yeah. So thank you for that, Mr. Smith, we just accept those.
We're hoping that we'll get another senior site visit, uh, hopefully in late October, early November.
Beautiful.
What's up, Davey?
I will. Now, moving to usually the most exciting part of our agenda, it's just a superintendent's for business.
Yes, good evening. So short and sweet here. During the Unit A teachers negotiations, there were points added for Maple Shade in Mountain View after-school, before and after-school programs. Um, they're very popular, and we anticipate that we would, um, that they're, that they will run some additional ones, possibly with a fee attached, and if we do that, then that needs to be set up as a revolving account. Therefore, I'd like to, anticipating that we're going to need this, I would like to request the school committee, um, for approval to, for me to set up two revolving accounts, one for Maple Shade and one for Mountain View, for the before-after-school programs.
Nice.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. So let's vote on these separately. I'll take a motion for five, one, two point one for Maple Shade.
Move to approve the creation of a revolving account for Maple Shade's before and after school programs.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We are unanimous. Moving to five point two point two, Mountain View school, do I have a motion?
I move to, um, approve, sorry, I lost it, a revolving account for the Mountain View before and after school programs.
Now, most would have a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? We are unanimous again.
Talk something.
Moving right along. Six point one, draft the school committee goals for the 2018-2019 school year. Mr. Smith.
Okay, in your informational packet, you should have a document that looks like this, which has, um, a draft of the goals that, uh, in our last meeting, uh, the professional development meeting that took place on September 17th, um, we discussed and then revised, and we added some new action steps. So this gives you a chance to look at the four categories where we have goals, fiscal management and budget, capital planning, educational program and curriculum, and community relations. Um, in each of those, we've added some new action steps, and additionally, in your packet, I did give you again
Thank you.
The draft of the district SMART goals, um, just so you know how they might be coordinated and connected, and then obviously, as we seek to have these approved after you've approved your goals, um, that presentation will come on November 5th.
As we look at these goals, these are all very, what I like about them is they're all very concrete, and they're all very doable. Is this something we should vote on, Mr. Superintendent?
I think it would make sense to, to vote on it, and, so that we have it in place, and then it would be certainly a driving force for any changes in the district goals.
I'll move that we approve the 2018-2019 school committee goals as presented.
And from Mr. Thompson, do I have a second?
Second.
And from Mr. Fontseca, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Anybody opposed? We are unanimous again. We're moving right along here. New business. First Park Middle School, sixth grade field trip. Nomads Outdoor Adventure Parks, Connecticut. Okay, Mr. Smith, you're on.
So this is the second half of the sixth grade class.
Oh, I feel bad. I anticipated.
Come on, man.
Again, we're good, Mr. Smith.
Yeah. During our last meeting, there was, uh, a very good discussion on the sixth grade trip that was presented to the Nomads Outdoor Adventure Park, um, and that was one team of the sixth grade class, uh, and it was centered around, the field trip was centered around team building and the social-emotional skillsets that, um, have been outlined as part of, um, the socio-emotional education, um, that Desi recommends for all districts. One of the questions was, uh, what is the other team doing? And, um, the other team actually just was putting this together and had not been as timely as the first team, but they're going, and they're going about a week, I think, or two later.
Is there any way you could ask Dr. Allen to have a little better penmanship on his signature? I mean, really?
I can, I can check on that for you.
Um, I think, so we have number of chaperones here, we have the cost, we have the date, we have the place, the numbers, no, it's great.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, in the event that a student isn't gonna participate, will they then be absorbed into the team that's
Yes.
Being behind on that day, so they'll be able to
We'd be able to.
Not miss day of school.
Absolutely.
That's a good question.
I move to approve the student field trip to Nomads Outdoor Adventure Park on October 29th.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say, and it's not relevant, but it is relevant, I went, because I should have mentioned it earlier, uh, for the DC trip, um, how organized Dr. Allen was, and that he had a wonderful response to students coming, and just that, I'm sure this'll go the same way, but that it was very well-attended, very organized, and I just thought I'd throw that in there before we move along.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcin, Boucher. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We are unanimous again, Ms. Seletti. And now, for our last item, seven point two, the ELTS five-year capital plan for 2018, 2019. Mr. Smith.
Okay, uh, in your informational packet, you have a spreadsheet that's in blue that captures, uh, basically fiscal year 2020 out to fiscal year 2024. The projects that, um, we really wanna focus in on are the ones in that first column where it says year one. Uh, we have approximately sixteen projects divided, uh, throughout the five schools, with a few projects being considered district-wide, and, um, the town has expedited this year their capital planning process, uh, so we're hoping to submit these, uh, as early as next week in terms of potential priority for fiscal year 2020. So what you see here is, um, the projects broken out for fiscal year 2020 by school, and prioritized, um, by school. Ultimately, it would be helpful if, after our discussion, we would be able to prioritize somewhat for the district.
So our goal tonight is to prioritize this for the whole school system?
If we can, yes. So just a couple highlights, uh, some pun intended, I guess. Uh, the top one there, obviously, is the, um, accelerated repair project for the Meadowbrook roof, so that's a number that we need to have the town keep in mind, because eventually they will have to appropriate it. However, given that it is an MSBA project similar to the windows and doors, we should be getting reimbursement somewhere in the fifty to fifty-five percent range, similar to the windows and doors. However, we can't lose sight of the fact that before that process happens, the town does have to appropriate the, the project budget.[1709.48]
Right.
Then as you go down towards the bottom, that is me anticipating that we will be invited into the eligibility period for the core program.
Bless that optimism. You're too optimistic, I know.
And so looking back at our facility study that was published in late 2013, December of 2013, we've added the cost escalation for each year since then. So this is an approximate value of about 1.2 million to do what the MSBA would call a feasibility study that has to happen before you move to the project building stage in the core program.
So with that request, though, I would say we'd want to be specific on the dates that we anticipate hearing from MSBA and thus being able to either go forward with the request or remove it based on...
I think that's one you would definitely want to put an asterisk next to. Because you do have, I put in there, you have 270 days to appropriate that amount of money.
From the approval of MSBA's...
From their board votes, correct. So if they vote officially, let's say we were notified late November, most likely that means that their official vote is going to be in December. So whenever that vote happens, we'd have 270 days to appropriate the 1.2 million as a town.
And typically, when is, when does the council finalize the budget request for capital projects?
In years past, it's gone all the way into the spring with the regular budget. This year, we have been expedited somewhat. Generally, we're not submitting our capital proposals until the first week of November. So if that's a sign of how we're going to go through the whole process, then it could be just after the new year.
Has Mr. Feely seen this list?
Yes. He not only has sat with me, he has sat with each of the principals, he or Joe Dunn, the facilities manager.
So do we have any recommendations from DPW on priorities?
I think DPW pretty much is following the priorities of the buildings. Because before I prioritize for the buildings, I got the notes from the building principal and DPW. The one question mark would be, do you do anything, where you see parentheses, for the part of the roof at the high school?
And the numbers beside them, is that priority or just listed the number of projects?
Where it says priority FY20?
Yeah.
Those are the building priorities.
Okay, so for example, in ELTS, the six priority is to add room to cafeteria tables.
Correct.
That's the lowest, that's the lowest priority.
However, with that said, within the core program, you're going to pick up, if we were invited, the 3.49 electrical service upgrade. You're going to pick up the full roof replacement at 6.8 million, and you're going to pick up a parking lot renovation. So it does get confusing, but those would be projects that the committee might not want to prioritize as number one, but obviously have capital planning recognize that these are urgent needs. However, we're hoping that they're taken care of through the MSBA process.
And that begs us to the annual discussion of
Correct.
where do we go?
Correct.
So I happened to watch the council meeting and they were talking about the process. And they specifically mentioned us and our nonspecificness last year about this high school and what we were actually requesting. So I would say that we want to be very specific as to what we're asking for and what we're not asking for. My opinion, one of five of us at the table, is that we certainly make a note of all six of those priorities, but not ask for any of them this year.
Right.
And so take them really off the list, maybe put them at the very bottom, just to recognize that there's a real cost to them, but to thus not add to the confusion like we did last year as to, well, you're asking for a request, but you're not really asking for it. So I think we need to give it another year. And then, so let's not ask for those this year, but certainly denote that they're there and that they're a lot of, large dollar amounts.
But I, and I agree with you, but I'm wondering if they're going to say, well, what about the freshman wing roof that's been on there for, you know, and, you know, again, it's an education process all over again.
Right, but I think if we are unified, at least in terms of what our position is and what we're trying to accomplish.
Oh, I agree.
Then it becomes less of a discussion about that. I don't know. Is there really merit to doing the freshman wing roof right now?
No.
Well, I think we're back in the...
I feel it's not unsafe. We've discussed it and it's been shown not to be unsafe.
Structurally, it's not unsafe. What people are reacting to, and rightly so, is that it's a different membrane than the rest of the roof. It's one that has worn out faster. And for those who have been up there, there's a few areas doing what they call tenting, where it's separated. And so it's almost like there's an air pocket in there. And so obviously, that makes it much easier to have a puncture of some kind because it's actually sitting up there with an air pocket. Interestingly enough, the freshman wing does not necessarily have any more leaking than other areas of the roof with that membrane. It does have some leaking, depending on the storm and the way the rain's coming down. But I think some of our more severe leaks over the summer were more towards the gymnasium and the calf area and the locker rooms.
The way the wind was blowing and the way the rain came down. I mean, that makes sense. So, nothing for Burt'sland?
Burt'sland opted to move their projects out, given how many projects we have in FY20. Probably the biggest need for them is doing something with their carpets in the library. The carpets are now 18 years old and they're tending to bunch. So you have little ripples throughout. And so they do have a vendor quote on that, where is it? At 56,000. I think it's not only the library carpet, but the two computer labs and the chorus room. One comment that I do want to make and make sure that you're looking at is, for the high school, you have furniture. You don't necessarily have to, well, you have to keep it at 20,000 if it's going to be a capital project, or we would have to look at that and sort of phased buying.
But any furniture purchased during a core project will be subject to the reimbursement rate, right?
I believe so.
So would it be who has to wait on those requests?
You might. For furniture, you might want to have it. It's one thing with the desk.
You can certainly store furniture, such as our purchases of furniture that have now created sort of our flexible learning spaces, where we have the mobile carts and tables that can be reconfigured and easily configured. We've purchased those knowing that we can move those into any new building.
Okay, fair enough.
The one other thing is there is concern, although you have asbestos underneath the rugs in central office, the old superintendent's office, where we now have our athletic offices, there has been concern that that rug does seem damp and...
Is that new this year, 30?
That's new.
Yeah.
This number 30 is...
Yeah.
So we should request that?
Yeah.
I like Mr. Thompson, I think number three, I like with Mr. Thompson, we should be all in. We've got two beautiful letters from politicians. I think, yeah, I think number 30 maybe from a health point of view should be looked at. And the rest should be just all held in abeyance because of the core project.
Have they checked number 30 out? Like, has somebody gone in and looked and done a moisture test?
We did the testing, actually, last week after people who are working in the offices had asked us. So we're going to be putting in a dehumidifier in there. There is an air conditioning unit. I don't know how well it's working, given how the offices seem.
It's been extra special, like humidity this fall, too.
So we're looking into that. We're also looking at just the ventilation of both our locker rooms and how we, if we can do a better job with that. And it's all tied together down there.
Right.
So based on the request from the administrators, how they've already prioritized it, I would say that probably a best played of attack or suggestion, I can make the suggestion at least is that we go with the number ones from each of the school, prioritize those district-wide, and then go to the number twos. I don't know, does that make sense? We tend to try to get or acknowledge each building.
Each building, right.
Well, that's why I asked a question about Burt'sland.
Hey, cool it out.
Well, no, I just, you know, I get it, but, you know, I just...
Being team players.
Yes, you are being team players. It is.
That's fine.
So... Those are the number ones. Who will we put first, the core project or the roof replacement? Which should go first?
Well, the roof replacement, we're going to do, that's already given.
I think you can put it there with an asterisk as just so that they know that's something that they're going after.
There hasn't been a vote on that.
No. What they will appropriate, hopefully in the next week or so, is the money for schematic design.
Yeah.
So that's coming up. If free cash is certified by the Department of Revenue within the next week, then we will be on the agenda, I think, October 9th. Is that the next council meeting?
So this money was approved, the 1.9 million, last...
Not yet. It has not been approved.
They haven't approved it from last year?
No.
Okay.
The money that they have to approve first is for the schematic design.
Schematic design, okay.
This is just a placeholder.
Which of the two should go first as our number one? The core high school project or what we're talking about now, the Meadowbrook roof replacement?
Well, I think, I don't, so I wouldn't put the core project first. In fact, I would, I don't know.
I don't think I'd put either one of them.
I don't know that they're going to want to vote to fund that request without actually needing it.
Until we get it.
But I think to acknowledge, again, to acknowledge that it is a request and that it could be coming up on the horizon, and then we can let them decide if they want to put it in line this time around or if it would be a special vote. So I say we keep that one down at the bottom, you know, and then put the high school ones below that. And then from there, we pick from the other number ones.
Why don't you give it a stab, Mr. Thompson?
Well, one more thing, because by the time I think they make their decision, we'll know where we're sitting with the core project.
Back to Mr. Smith's point, it's going to be quite a few asterisks.
Yes, there will be. Well, I think, I, yeah. But I think that's the way we do it.
The Meadowbrook roof replacement, there hasn't been a vote on that either, right?
No, no. That's just so that they know that that's coming, because we're in that.
Yeah, we're in. And we've let them know, right?
Yes, so they, they know that...
So again, so I think we make this a three-part list. And so the first part is our actual requests, which would include, starting at number two, because leave the highlighted one. And then we'll prioritize everything between the two highlighted numbers. And then below that, put the two highlights and say, these are on the horizon. These are anticipated and actually expected, hopefully, costs.
Accelerated repair actually will happen.
Right, that one.
Right. And then the high school list below it, and so it's all neatly prioritized. So we're saying, here's our regular requests. Here's our requests that MSBA will be or could be funding. Here are the high school requests that we're not asking for funding this year, but we're acknowledging there's a significant cost to them. We're not asking for them.
Okay. So there are almost three categories.
Yeah.
So category number one, what would be the top priority category number one?
So again, I would go back to the number ones of the schools. We were already addressing Meadowbrooks. So now you're left with Maple Shade, which is the final phase of the full door renovation. And then Mountain Views, which is the modulars, which is again a significant cost. So there's some strategy to what we ask for and what order, because potentially, if that one was funded alone, we'd probably, potentially would get no other capital investment at one point.
Well, I mean, and then it goes back to, are they going to bond again? Is that a question?
Potentially, they could, depending on... So if we go, so just by that logic, I would say we start with Maple Shade final phase of the front door renovations at 50,000.
Want that to be one?
Yeah.
And I would, you want to put that high school asbestos and carpet removal and athletic offices as number two?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, when do we go to the, what's left is the modulars. So now we put the modular at three?
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, strategically speaking, I would prefer to put the office renovation ahead of the modular, which is so much more reasonable that we would achieve that versus the modulars. But I'd also like to recognize the administrators and how they prioritize things. So I think...
That renovation include flipping where the office is, so they'll be by the door?
And the idea would be to set it up exactly as you're saying, so that you have your reception closer to the door.
I like the modular three myself.
Modular, yeah?
Yeah, I hope those people feel.
No, I, yeah, if you put, the asbestos will grab people's attention, so that sits at two.
Right.
And then put the modulars at three, and to Greg's point, you know, you have sticker shock.
Yeah, it is. But you know, they really are, they were bad back then.
Yeah, they were.
So they've got to be really...
Okay, so we addressed...
How about stadium bleachers?
Why not? I mean, really?
Well, let's spend there.
Please, let's finish that thing.
It's an embarrassment if a visiting team comes here, it really is. Want to make that four?
That would be my choice.
Want to make that four?
Yeah.
You don't like it?
Well, Beth, here's the thing with the...
I understand, I understand. I know, I know.
It is a project that has been outstanding now for, I don't even know how many years, seven years.
Since we started, I started, I know that. I'm aware.
Well, let's back this up. We're hosting MIAA playoff games. We don't have the capacity.
I know that.
So I agree putting it in there. Let's move, let's move it up. Show them, show the, you know, show the council that it is a priority.
So that's four. So that's a district-wide. So we've covered every building except for, which obviously has not moved anything in that line. So now, I would say we go a little bit deeper here now. This may be, we're at four?
Yes, sir.
We're going to, the other two, the two core projects, we're going to put in a different category.
Yeah. So we're at the twos now.
I'd like to see the Mountain View. I'd like to see those flip-flopped, you know.
The office renovation first?
Yeah.
You want to make that five?
I mean, I know Meadowbrook has it on their list and it's not numbered yet, but I think it's some...
Maple Shade was first with other than the ones.
Yes, Maple, yeah.
You want to make, so what do you put, what do you ask for?
I'd like to see the Mountain View interior office. Although Maple Shade has one too, but that's next year, right? They're next.
So you don't make that five?
Their door project, they're trying to
Get that.
establish some of the things that we've been able to establish with Meadowbrook's door project.
Okay.
And so they're looking to do similar things. Remember, their office, which is unique
Right.
just to Maple Shade, looks directly out at those doors.
It does, yeah.
Do you want to make, do anybody have, everybody else making that five?
Yep.
Okay, so that's five. The Mountain View interior office renovation is five. Staying with the twos, we've got Maple Shade asphalt play area, and we've got the Meadowbrook parking lot redesign. And the high school, we're going to say all of those are not, we're not going to fund those because of the core project.
Correct.
So we're really looking at now just those two, the Maple Shade redo asphalt play area and the Meadowbrook parking lot redesign. Well, the number seven does involve students.
Yeah.
Whereas number two, what do you mean, what do you mean by the, what are they redesigning in the parking lot?
So what they're looking to do is add more parking area. If you look at Meadowbrook, the, for lack of a better term, traffic islands
Yeah.
actually take up a considerable amount of potential parking spaces. So we'd like to be able to have the staff park on one side of the building and increase the amount of parking for visitors and families on the other side. With that, although they've added to the lighting, they haven't, or increased the lighting just by doing different things at the existing poles, I think they would like to add lighting poles in that redesign as well.
When they have events...
Strategically speaking, I think you go with a smaller amount only because you have more likeliness of getting a smaller thing funded.
I also think you're helping kids directly there, too.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's make, let's make number seven, number six. So seven becomes six in our priorities, Mr. Smith. You following this?
Yep, the Maple Shade asphalt.
And so the last number two by default would be the number two, the parking lot redesign would be number seven.
Okay, so that's Meadowbrook parking lot redesign.
It's a number seven. Okay. Now, are we good there? And then the next category is going to be the two core projects, correct?
Well, you have the other two that we have to put in line, number eight and number nine, because we'd be the next, the last two.
Do you want to go that deep with three and four?
I think we do.
Well, yeah, that's all that's left.
That's all that's left.
Yeah, let's do it. Good. Let's go right the way they add. So there'd be seven and eight then.
So there'd be eight and nine.
Eight and nine.
Yeah.
What would then be seven?
You have...
Oh, it's already eight and nine.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent, excellent point, Mr. Thompson. Eight.
So that's Maple Shade roof and...
The office expansion.
Office expansion.
Excellent. So that's category one.
Yep.
Category two is going to be the two core projects that are highlighted, correct?
Correct.
And category three is going to be listing the high school projects other than number 30 and saying that we're not funding these based on the application for the core project.
Correct.
You all set with that?
Mm-hmm.
You get your asterisks ready to go and everything?
I do. Always have my asterisks ready.
Oh, jeez.
Okay, so we'll pause here and maybe make a dangerous act and see if, can we make a motion on this?
May I suggest one thing?
Yeah, don't, no, it's going well, Mr. Smith.
All I'm doing for, because I'm thinking outlines and organizing, I just considered it section A, B, and C, because you then have numbers in A. One, project one is Maple Shade doors, two, high school offices.
So you don't like my category word?
No, no, the categories are fine. I was just making them alphabet.
Labeling.
Thank you.
Labeling.
Yeah, so your three categories are A, B, C.
Yeah.
And then there's numbers on it.
And then your numbers, your numbers are under each category.
Got you, got you.
I think within the asterisks, we need to be specific. I mean, the 1.9 will be needed, they'll have to pass that. The 1.2, we don't know.
Right.
Yeah, probably a little bit of detail with it.
Absolutely. The next phase of this, we'll be submitting all the individual project descriptions as well as this master five-year plan. And then I'll have a separate sheet on this, and then we will sit down with town manager and town finance director. So that they're very aware and anything that they would like us to add to make sure that we're presenting in the best way possible to the town council, I'm sure they'll ask for.
So we've only added two on looking five now into the whole five-year plan, two projects for year five.
Correct.
And that would be Maple Shade. No other building has any other projects that they'd like to put on the plan?
Well, that oil and water separator, you could do it at all buildings. They just haven't...
Is that the heating system?
No, it's actually, I want to say it's, you might, yeah, actually, you might be right. It might be the heating system. That was something in the facility study that they recommended for all our buildings to do, as well as having the ancil system set up in each of the buildings. I don't think that's listed in each building, though. So those are things that should be continuously out there.
And are there any other new projects added to this list that we haven't already discussed?
I like the dream of air conditioner units in all community elementary schools. I think that's fun.
I mean, to be more efficient with the air conditioning units, they should be rooftop units.
Electrically, it wouldn't be more efficient than what they've got, but...
Sure.
Right now, in our discussions with DPW and the principals, they're not coming up with any other new projects?
Well, that haven't been on the past, like, I don't remember the terrazzo floor repair of Maple Shade. Is that new?
That is not new. It's just
That's been like a while now.
One that I think they bumped out.
I see. Rooftop AC units in 24 classrooms, that would do the whole school?
Yes.
But the hallways would not be air-conditioned?
No.
So how do you do that? You have to close all the doors all the time? I'm just asking.
Yeah, you just have your vent system in the classrooms. I mean, the hallways would probably benefit.
Retrofit, yeah.
They'll cool down by virtue of...
If you, actually, if you traveled our buildings now with the windows, the windows use...
The older schools.
The hallways benefited just from that.
Right, I get it. All right, Rich, would you read the numbers one more time just to make sure that...
Okay, Mr. Smith, you help me here. Number one is six.
Yep.
Number two is number 30. Number three is number 16. Number four is number 36. Number five is number 17. Number six is number seven. Number seven is number two. Number
Eight.
Eight is...
Number eight?
Number eight.
Okay, number nine is nine.
Number nine, okay.
And then section two, calling it, is the two core projects.
That's B, section B.
Section B.
Category B.
And section C is going to be the listing of the high school projects less number 30, saying that we're not funding them. We're being very specific. So that is all that's...
Sorry to interrupt. Oh, good. Number 23, there's an extra G in the middle word.
Oh, yeah.
Cathedral, yes.
It's a very efficient room.
New concept.
Thank you.
I think we're ready.
Yep.
Want to make the motion, someone?
Who that we approve the capital plan prioritized that discussed?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? We are unanimous. Great work there. Thank you very much.
And as always, we'll discuss with council.
Yes. My God. Well, thank you, Mr. Brady, for being here again, and Mr. Mack, always. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, no.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we are, a vote, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Hold. Kathy, we are unanimous all the way through.